I agree, so I'll call it the meeting of the French County Board of County Commissioners to order. Members of the County Board of Commissioners are advised hereby, for duty, to the state government efforts to avoid conflicts of interest in the appearance of conflict and further instructed to refrain from participating in any matter done before those Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is a conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Jacob, with you, please.
You're having a thought. Thank you for this time. And I thank you for arguing with Blackberry. And I thank you for allowing us to gather together, all of the business, and thank you, goodness, to me, God. I pray that you go with us, so this may complete, God, and direct us, help us to make the best decisions for our county. In Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? The agenda is approved. Does anyone need additional time to look up the minutes of the E and R meetings of April 19th and 26th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Order of E and R for April 19th and 20th. Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. All right. Are we going to any manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Certainly.
Good evening, all. Good evening, everyone. I'll be providing the county manager's report, and then after a discussion, if any, I'll move right into the project manager's report. First thing, first item on that is the, it's just another update on the Grandin County, or actually, our objections to the forest plan, U.S. Forest Service Forest Plan. I've provided the letter that I got. You should have also had it in your email. Pretty important document. This obviously lets, tells us that we submitted our objection in a timely manner. We are an eligible objector. The also, it also lets us know that they extended their review period, so that's why probably it's going to be going out in the August timeframe. But it is from Ms. Debbie Anderson, who's administrative review specialist at the Washington office, and it's anticipated to having the resolution meetings virtually, it did say virtually in the letter. I don't anticipate any in person as of right now, but virtually the first part of August 2022. I did receive that letter and email, which I reported to you on May 3rd. That's my understanding, and I will communicate, I'll keep in touch with Andy Gaston and Ray from the Nashville office, who we've been talking to about the forest plan, is just continue to stay in communication with them. But it's my understanding they'll notify me when they, when that virtual meeting is going to happen in our form. So good news, at least in the form of we've got a forum, it's just in getting them to listen to us. Might be the challenge. Next item, there's no questions. We had the, had a meeting with the Southwestern Commission Rural Planning Organization, the actual, which I'm a member of, the Technical Coordination Committee meeting this week, 17th May, and I've provided just a copy of the, some of the upcoming things, the schedule for the current 2020-2029 transportation improvement program that's provided here. Provided the Grandin County, look towards the bottom of the page, some things to note. That's going to happen this year, as everybody knows, the so-called corridor K, I think there's three sections that's going to happen, that's supposed to be led in October this year. So it'll be interesting to see how that goes, and what we see coming from that project. I would venture to say without lead in 2022, it's probably a start in time, sometime in 2023, if not later, depending on that contract. Couple other things of note, if you see, if you go down the list, some things out to 2029, the swing Grandin County line out of Fontana Village, upgrade the roadway. Then NC 28, a little, over the Little Tennessee River, that's a 2024 project to replace the bridge. Also have, I think the Five Point Road Bridge is right there at, when you turn it on, from Five Point going up, I'm going to replace that bridge. That's a 2026 lead. Lower Mill Creek, I talked to the DOT about, they called me about the Lower Mill Creek Road and asked, you think we could just close the road, or should we survey the people and not worry about that? And I said, you better survey the people. So they're looking, I think that's the bridge they're talking about, maybe replacing, up from where Marlowe's house is. And that's a 2024 lead. And then the last one, I believe, is the bridge right across the street here, that went on Old 129, and that's a 2026 lead. That may make my, my travel home a little longer. They take that bridge out. Yeah. A little update from the DOT. It's a good meeting. Rose does a good job, and it's very informative. So I'll give you a little update on the projects and how it's coming through. Move on to, the next one is CDVG Grants updated. Ben and Becky are working closely with Monica and Alice. Unfortunately, they are having a little bit of problem with commerce. They pushed back and almost wanted us to go out a third time. I would encourage you guys to look at some of our emails with these procurements. They're having trouble all over the state getting contractors to bid on anything. Some with none, some with one. So we're hoping to set up a meeting potentially next week, if not the week after for sure, try to get a better hold on where we're going. So not a whole lot of updates up there on CDVG. But we're not giving up. Next item is the Watchout and Ball. As I reported, if you remember of the previous meeting, and I'm sure Keith, I don't know how long it's been, I've not been up there, so I don't know how long it's been since Keith was up there, but the road was in bad shape. The good news is, after talking to a few people, the Forest Service did go out and they have done some work on the road. It's a, it's a temporary fix, and it's decent now, so much that a two-wheel drop could potentially make it up there. That's good in the sense for any kind of maintenance or a problem that we can get up there. He did, after a conversation with Andy Gaston, he did say that is certainly not a permanent fix. It'd take a couple more storms to, and it would be back in bad shape again. And obviously, that's a concern for us, for EMS, fire, and communications. So we're going to stay on top of that. We discussed it a little bit more. Apparently, they're in communication with AT&amp;T again, and their intent is still to move there, and they are saying they'll foot the bill for the construction of the road. Andy's afraid that with several thousands of dollars to do, they had an estimate to do some drainage, some permanent drainage and cutouts in the road that it needs, and think the Forest Service would go for the money. And obviously, I said, pending a board approval, I'm sure with the road maintenance after it's fixed, Grandin County would be willing to work with, or approval with North Carolina Highway Patrol, Forest Service, maybe Wildlife and whoever else has that, just to keep that road going. So I'll stay on that project the best we can, we'll keep an eye on that road. But it was good to know that the Forest Service had been up there doing some work on it to make it pass.
What had they done, Jake?
They took a dozen.
Did they put gravel there?
Yeah, I think they put a little bit of gravel, but mostly kind of, they fixed a lot of those turnouts where it was hard to get a truck in. Now, they had some gullies really bad in the road. Road's pretty good. I intend at some point to go up with Ronnie or Harold to get a better view, a little better perspective than I'll have by looking at the road. Next item is the Great Grant Partnership. As you know, we asked the Board if they would be willing to, which is a good resource and a good use of ARPA funds, can go towards that broadband expansion. And what we want to do is fiber to the home, and I know the Board is really concerned about fiber to the home and getting more people here access to the Internet. As you know, we provided three different letters. I proved, you know, I provided it here with a financial match of 15,000 of ARPA funds to Zito Media, Lawson West, and a company called Ziteel LLC. And I talked to Ms. Becca Scott again, who I work with on that, and she's with Southwestern Commission as well, and she expects that probably through the end of this month, the beginning of June, they'll go through those grants. She said they have about 300 data applications. So it'll take a while to look through those applications before they award the grants. And I'll be in communication with her between now and then. She said she would send me those when they finalize for Grandin County, and we'll know who we potentially might be working with on getting some fiber to the home here in Grandin County. So that's potentially some good news for us as well, too. So we'll know more probably this early summer. This one, this one might ask the Board for a decision on, as you know, we discussed trying to collect cardboard. As you know, cardboard is one of the few sources of revenue that we can get through sanitation. We came up with a program to use grant money, it's about $70,000 left of grant money to purchase some roll-up dumpsters. In order to do that, we were able to use that money just for the dumpsters, but we want to utilize an out-of-service ambulance, and Keith may know a little bit more about this, that we have currently up at EMS to retrofit to take those roll-off dumpsters so we can go around and pick them up as we drop those dumpsters off to a facility that has a lot of cardboard. But we would, in order to do that, obviously, we have to take the box off the ambulance, and Tri-County would really like to have that, use it as a simulation lab. So in order to donate to them, we would, I would ask the Board if they'd be willing to surplus, or give us permission to surplus the box so we can donate it to Tri-County inside of a simulation lab.
So is there a motion to donate the box off the ambulance that's going to be used for the roll-off dumpster, to give that to Tri-County? Is that right? As a simulation unit, is there a motion for that, please?
For the dumpsters compacting and top.
They're not. We'll use, we'll, we'll collect all the cardboard in, and they have lids, they're made for like cardboard recyclables. We'll go around with a truck, once we retrofit this ambulance to a cardboard, to pick up the dumpsters, bring them out to our, where we have our baler, and then we'll bail boxes and then keep, you know, do a little bit more revenue with cardboard to capture, because there's a lot of that cardboard goes in our, on our ticket forward. It's a transfer station.
All right, I have a motion to donate the box to Tri-County. Is there a second?
Second.
Off the ambulance. All in favor?
Thank you. We'll move on to the last item. This is something that we've discussed in the past, and I think maybe you saw, and may have forwarded to you, that the Forest Service finally gave us, I think, Keith, you may assign the permit for the land use, special use up at the closed landfill on Antoa. I've provided Mesco Engineering's quote that we've been working with. It's fairly lengthy, and if we, if you want to maybe look it over, and then we, when we get, when we get together tomorrow, we can maybe decide on what we want to do on the cost-wise. But I've summarized it a little bit here. We did receive the special use permit that Vice Chair Eller signed. On May 11th, I sent that back to the Forest Service. We'll just have to wait for their approval and signature, then we can move forward with the project with Mesco Engineering before, and that comes from James Meloas to execute. Phase one of the work will include, this is, this is the first phase, which is that, as you see, when you look down about middle of the page, it's associated with the initial phases of the estimate, and this is to put in, and I have Max here if you want to see it again, this is that monitoring well, well number four, that they're requiring us to put in, which is closer to the road, I think, what you go up to where the old site is. And so I have that if you want to see it. It'll include, obviously, the installation of that well, the development of water quality plan for all phases, which are two, to be approved by North Carolina Department of Waste Management. It will include field sampling and lab, lab fees for all three existing wells and of course, the new well, surveying of the well locations. They'll meet with the North Carolina Energy Minerals and Land Resources Department to go over the current stormwater permit preparation documentation report and justification, and that will cost, that first phase will cost $21,800, do all that work. The next phase would include the other two monitoring wells, there's a total of three with their requirements to put on that old site. That, that phase two will include those same reporting requirements and some of the other things that's involved, other than obviously, I think the survey is included in their initial one, so that's why it's not doubled. But those two wells, that total cost is $36,500 for phase two, which doesn't have to be done this go-around, looking at maybe potentially over next FY or the next two FYs, to finish those all three. And then total for both phases, the price was at $58,300. They tried to put a 15% escalation or contingency because of its, who knows now, obviously, and that's totaled around $67,000. I'll, I'll request the Board to see what you would want me to do, how you want to proceed. Obviously, we will, we'll need to get this done soon, and I think we're required to do it. Correct. Obviously, some of this was done before I could take over, but I've been learning a whole lot more about what the requirements are, and Mesco did provide a detailed summary. If you want to look that over, and if we could talk about it, or it's your Board's decision off you want to approve at least the phase one, I'll leave that up to the Board's discretion.
Okay. I have here from the Board. Jacob, what are your thoughts on what we are? I don't know what we're choosing.
So we do it, maybe we can find out, please. Just, we hear more space. Yeah. I agree, because I mean, this is what, if we don't get it done, then it's just going very, anyway, we may end up getting fined because we're not following the policy, so the best is to really do that. Huge fine, too.
I think your, that your recommendation is to at least go ahead with phase one. What are your thoughts?
We can never get out from one of that dump.
No, we've never been out from one of that dump. Well said. Dave, your thoughts?
Do it all and get it over with.
Okay. All right, so I have your motion to approve phase one, as stated by the manager, $21,800. And the motion is their second. Second, all in favor?
Thank you. All right. Any other questions on the manager's report? We should have two documents there on capital projects, manager's report. This one might be pretty short as well. Moose Branch, really, there's no change on Moose Branch subdivision, 93% complete. It really looks good, it's impressive. I'm also talking to the schools so that the Board knows about working with them to build a house for us. We're also, I'm also communicating with Dogwood potentially on funding the materials and equipment. They really sound very optimistic and positive about this project. Does two things, it's affordable housing, but we're also working with the school in their training and vocational plan. Little bit of the downside is it's a, talking to the school, it's a four semester project for them, so it'll take about two years to complete that house.
Yeah. And Dogwood's certainly not familiar with that kind of stuff, right? However, every time I spoke to Sarah Grimes or Sarah Thompson, they were very positive about this project, delighted to bring the school in, into some training, trade training, which is some of the most needed trades in our area right now. Have a shortage of housing. If, as a matter, I heard someone say this week, if I needed to ask someone to build a house for me right now, it would be for two to four years, and I'm sure you could back those statistics up, Jason.
That's very much true.
Two to four years.
Very much true.
So we certainly need more trained plumbers, electricians, carpenters, et cetera, and that's one way to get them done in, in a house we have as well. So I'm excited about it, but I love the look of that little project. It's not flat. It's, that was a really big headache for us, but it certainly is beautiful the way it is landscaped and laid out now. I'm very proud of it.
I expect the guardrail, I talked to contractor and engineer, I expect the guardrail to probably either next week or the following week. That'll basically bring us pretty much completing the contract. So the RDA will be available to do the, we have some decisions we need to make, right? We need to pick a lot if we're going to build a house, but we may want to keep more than one if this is a good thing. If we need housing, maybe we build another one.
And then you're training.
Build another one. You need to keep two different. So I'm scheduling right now, so I'll email, going back and forth, we're scheduling right now to sit down with Dogwood, the school, and the USDA in the coming few weeks. We were looking at our next RDA, so you, so you know, Madam Chair, potentially, it might be that Wednesday or that Thursday between the next, well, not the next.
You can have to do me like, at this very firm and tall.
Yes, ma'am. No problem doing that.
Thank you.
So we're moving forward that, like I said, it's exciting for the citizens of Grandin County. We really want to move forward to that.
Okay. Question on the development. Does this development require state bill or can it be manufactured?
Well, we don't, we're working through, that's a great question. We're working through the restrictions with Brady Coby's, our attorney, will put restrictions. I think we probably won't let it be manufactured, the restrictions, but we probably would consider modular. In other words, like a house and a two-car. Kind of what, okay. Yeah, I guess what I should have said was manufactured like mobile homes, we probably won't allow, but, but we would modulars and regular state bill. That's probably what we're looking at. And we want to try to keep it to where, we've got to make sure we do it legal, right? We want to make sure that somebody doesn't say they want to buy all 14 lots, and then they turn around and resell them for a profit as a development. We're trying to make sure we have the legal land. We want to try to give people that. What we're excited about is obviously with interest rates that are going up now, right? Well, if we can get this thing built at cost, we can keep even the cost down, even with the higher interest rate, this home should still be way more affordable than what they would go to real estate to buy. So that's what we're really hoping to do. That's the, that's the vision. I've got the key to it, to the gate. We wanted to make sure nobody was up there tearing the pavement up, so we got some change across if anybody ever wants to look at it. I can't get in there.
Did we, we were going to tell Dogwood?
We were, but we decided to change that.
We had, yeah.
Because they were, they weren't mad about it, they just suggested because of, if everything was named after them, that they
Yes.
Worked with them on, there'd be too many things named after them. So they changed, we voted to change the name of the subdivision to Zalea Hills, is what it would be called.
Oh, and we're in a Vegas town here, so I love that. We in Wellington, or, you know, it's right in Vegas towns in Northern Ireland.
One end to the other.
That's right. And if you haven't looked at, at the development, please drive around, maybe you take a look at it, and let us see. All right.
Move on real quick. Within the last week, we, probably a week and a half now, not really much change with the two, the two metal buildings, they just completed the metal building parts, got everything dry and completed. Had one issue that I had to call them back on, they were very responsive, there was an end piece that was leaking, and that one big Friday rain, they came and fixed that. And so we're, I'm waiting now just to get a few numbers to provide to the Board on starting the inside, so as soon as I get those numbers, I'll provide that to the Board. May not wait, if we can do it during a budget meeting, I'll try to do that, between now and the next, hopefully, the next board meeting. But really did a nice job, if you get a chance to go look at those buildings, really nice, really nice product. They look good, I think, in the area, too. The colors, I think, and I think you can credit Madam Clerk for picking up the color on the two buildings.
I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, you and Ronnie is in the office. They look, they look good.
That's almost a beat. But they do look good.
Yeah. There'll be, listen, they'll be, so, they're so neat, and they're going to be such an asset for what Matt, you know, but it's also Matt and Harold's going to be able to work with Matt's son to certain extent. It almost becomes our small engine shop up there with the mowers that they're going to be working on. We're wanting, we're hoping to save a little bit of tax dollars and not, and not trying to knock anybody out of work, but if Harold has time in the winter, you know, when he's not mowing so much, to do maintenance on his, on his equipment, that's an opportunity, a place to do it. Lot more of it. And then Ronnie, too, as you know, where he's got his stuff, he needs somewhere to take care of, and really itemize and put the stuff up for recreation, which you mentioned earlier about recreation, could be expanding that at some point, maybe. But anyway, really, really glad that we're where we are, and we just need to get it done. I don't know for the new office renovation for the Board of Elections. We are right now complete. I'm showing 95%, it may even be just a hair more than that. As of today, when I did this, they were here to put the closure on the door, I need to check on that, the ADA access, but the facility really, really is, is nice, and again, we can go check it out. They're planning on moving in, I think, the 31st, I think Memorial Day is Monday, the 30th. I think right now they're, they're planning to move in, take occupancy of the 31st. The only real things that I need to do was, was a door closer, that's a security thing I need to do for the, we have a security panel when you go in, need to do a couple things to that, and the touch-up painting, move some stuff out and some touch-up painting. We're real close to being done. Signage. The signage will be later, the office door signage is a little bit, another couple weeks, so they'll probably move in, and then we'll go back and do the signage for the doors, and then we've got to get an exterior sign. We need some signage for this building, I'll be presenting that later to the Commissioners for, we need to number our doors the same way, and get people a little bit more of a marquee when they walk in the door, show where we're at. So we'll do some signage for this building, and then what we want to do is a sign right next to their door, so it's clearly marked Grandin County Elections. So that's coming as well, too. That might be a little bit later, we're working on that. But the contractor was very responsive and did a great job, and I think it's turned out to be a really good project. Item five, moving on, is of course, the RFQ for qualifications on the Justice Center. Now, I feel like knowing what the number came in on the Justice Center, this might be something, you know, discussions we may continue with during the budget and maybe even tomorrow. But that's, that'll be a Board's decision again, I'm still waiting on approval to solicit for RFQs, but again, I'll leave that to the Board on how you want to proceed on the new Justice Center. Real quickly, item six, showing about 66% complete for the sixth grade addition renovations, a good project as well to go over and take a look at. I try to attend, sometimes I'll try to go more than once a month, but at least I try to attend our progress meeting and go walk around, and it's really nice, it's going to be great for the sixth grade over there. And of course, I provided that progress schedule, you have a copy of that, of where they're at. Looks like they're, if that's correct, looks like they're, they probably did a change of time, extension of time, and now they're, they're on schedule, because they weren't on schedule before, so I think they did approval of extension of time because of the, there were some delays with materials and of course, the foundation, which the Board was aware was going to happen. And last item is the Little Snowbird Project. We only had, as the Board made note, we only had one bidder when we bid it three weeks ago, I think it was the 29th of April, so we rebid it, and it will bid tomorrow. We should be able to open, if we get one or 10, we should be able to open, and hopefully we get one tomorrow. So it'll be in here tomorrow. If we, if we happen to be still doing our meeting, I can either take it to my office or we can go on a break, but we're supposed to open bids for the Little Snowbird Project tomorrow at 2:00. And Jonathan Eagle with LDSI will be here to administer that. There's no questions, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. All right. I know we didn't have time to do our finance.
Good evening. We're going to give you the finance report through April 30th of 2022. If you look on page one, you'll see that our general fund and cash balance closes at 5,632,308. We're a little bit below this time last year, however, our capital projects, and our school project will reveal that. So we're still very healthy as far as our cash balance, and just as an aside, we'll be speaking about our borrowing to replenish the funds we've spent for the capital projects here, sure. If you look lower on the page, you'll see If you look lower on the page, you'll see that our capital projects, capital management trust account is at $2,265,512. This capital project for the school, capital management trust account is still at 114. We've still got just a little bit shy of $83,000 in the American Rescue Plan Act account. I'll be speaking about that a little bit more here in just a few moments. And then the SCIF grant, that's the $5 million, that's also been transferred into the capital management trust and we now stand at $5,929. So we have earned about not quite a thousand more in interest since we got the funds. So we'll just keep letting that accumulate toward that core trust project. Page two, you'll see our property tax collections. Our total real collections were $54,529, of which $45,000 was current and a little under $9,500 was back taxes. Our VTS DMV taxes stood at $56,875. You'll notice that the collections for the month of April were lower than this time last year, but overall about average for April. And if you look over on page four, you'll see that our collection rate is at 97, which is a little higher than this time last year and a little higher than what we closed out for this time last year. So that helps in the budget quite a bit. We collected a little under $20,000 more in real taxes this year than last and a little under $14,000 in DMV over this time last year. And that's, that's to be expected because our levy was basically the same. If you look across the page, you'll say, oh gosh, what happened? Well, the levy was pretty much even for 2020, or 2021 than it was for 2020. So the fact that we're a little better off than this time last year, we should be almost in an even place as far as what our variance is. On page five, you'll see our revenues and expenditures for the month in the general fund for April. Our revenues were just a little bit under $991,000 and our expenditures were a little over 1.6 million. So we had a deficit of $663,000, which is pretty much the way April goes. We made several little payments this past month. And of course, our school payment will be up coming up due June 1. And after this year, next year, we'll be in a final payment on the high school, but then we'll be rolling into paying for the middle school. But the sales tax revenue, the school sales tax revenue will cover all of this debt service. So we're, we're in good shape as far as that's concerned as well. Page six, our year-to-date surplus is $1,652,31. This time last year, we were at 1.5 million, but again, we paid a lot out for capital projects. We paid out for the school capital project. So that's to be expected that our surplus is a bit lower than this time last year. Page seven, you'll see sales tax rebounding. I was happy to see that. We collected in, just the other day for the month of March, a little over $225,000. That does not include the quarter cent. That was about $24,000. So we're higher than this time last month and quite a bit higher than this time last year in sales tax. So that tells you that we've had a lot of people living through their spending money. And for it to be in March, that's really kind of phenomenal. Occupancy revenues are showing the same trend. So we've had a lot of folks passing through this county and they're spending money and that's, that's what we want to see. Um, page, pardon?
Inflation.
And inflation. Yeah, and inflation's getting us too. Page nine, you'll see what we have seen on the capital projects. Manager Marino and I did a reconciliation four weeks ago. We were pretty close to each other. He's keeping spreadsheet, they're not keeping project ledger. The election board, we spent a little over $158,000. The red building's a little under $74,000. Cemetery's a little over $82,000. And the county match on the middle school funds, we spent $688,000 for a total of just a little over a million dollars for these capital projects. The total middle school spending to date is $2,753,000. That includes the $688,000 that we included for the county match. So when I look at the, just our county capital projects, it's a little bit over $314,000. That's way less than we would have been spending. And so we owe Manager Marino a debt of gratitude for being our project manager and our general contractor. So that has, that saved the taxpayers a lot of money for us to be able to do these projects in permanent. Any questions?
Yes.
Call the finance board. Okay, we've got the budget report. We should have had 17% back in our budget. If you went back to the last page, you'll see we have 28%. So we're right where we need to be to be closing out the year. I did an analysis on all of the departments as well and most, all the departments are right in budget or a little, running a little bit slower than what they've budgeted. So that's good management on their part. We will be closing POs for what I would call the discretionary spending, May 31st, like we've always done. All the department heads are very well aware of how that works and of course, we'll be still be paying all the normal bills we paid and anything that is gnar enough with me will not be approved. And they all know that, so we're in really good shape. With that, I have a few budget amendments. We got some good news the other day. We got a little over $168,000 in SRS funding for Tammer. That's nothing what it needs to be, but at least we got it and we had to get Washington to fight for it this time. And we won't have to go, I think they, they went ahead and did a two-year appropriation for that. So the only thing I don't want to fight for is more. So, because that helps our schools and it helps our public safety, folks. So I do have a budget amendment to recognize the $168,750, of which 80% will go to the schools for $135,000 and that's based on the formulus required by the federal government. And then each of the five departments will receive $6,750 in the next few days.
Do you want to review the others?
If that's pleasing to the board. Then we have budget amendment number 19. This is the amendment that I've been holding on based, just to see what trends are with the change in the schedule for EMS. And looking at the trends to finish up the year, we need to add $301,000 to the EMS budget to cover the change. This is anticipated. We were thinking about four or 500,000, so I was happy to see that it was 300. The EMS director's doing a really good job from what I can tell and doing cost containment as well as managing his scheduling to where he's managing overtime. So that, that is the budget amendment that we talked, that we needed to do back in Mrs. D'Amico when the schedule was changed. And then budget amendment number 20 is to pick up some additional funding, this restricted funds into the county, of which the senior center's going to get $10,850 in general purpose funding. That's late. It usually comes in like in October, but I think they've been trying to figure out how the ARPA money was going to shake out. And so she finally got that the other day. We are pulling in impound money that the sheriff has that's restricted into his budget. We've got an additional $25,000 for real op money and that's for assistance to individuals with their water bills. $425 more in process intervention funds for DSS. $44,855 in link money, that's for power deals. And then Manager Marino alluded to the grant funding, the sanitation grant funding. That's the USDA grant slash loan funding that we applied for, got about four years ago when we took us together to get the garbage truck. We finally got it. And then due to a change in personnel, it's taken some time for them to change all the paperwork over. So there'll be a closing on that grant slash loan in the next probably couple of weeks. We've already fronted the cost of the garbage truck and then this covers the cost for the final expenditure for the containers that was within that project. So I'll be adding back into my balance the cost of the garbage truck and then we'll be making the expenditure that you guys are putting for the cans. And I think that's, yeah, as far as budget amendments for this company.
Thank you. Are there any questions or any discussion on amendments 18, 19, and 20? Here and now, I would ask for a motion to approve budget amendment 18, 19, and 20. Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you all in favor.
Thank you. And then I mentioned earlier in my report, the loan that were approved a couple of weeks ago for the financing of the county match for the middle school and also financing the capital projects that I reported on and that Manager Marino reported on. And then rolling into this is also the financing for the excavator that the board approved a couple of months ago for sanitation. What I have tonight is the final resolution for the borrowing to borrow no more than $2.3 million from United Community Bank on a 20-year note. And our next step following, if it's pleasing to the board to pass this resolution, the next step will be the presentation of the financing to the local government commission on May, or June the 7th with an anticipated closing date of June 17th on this loan.
Any questions or discussions on the resolution, board?
Me.
All right. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Take it.
All in favor?
And I will say that again, for the schools portion of this note, which is bulk of the note, all of the debt service payment will come out of the school sales tax that we received. And following payoff, we paid the QZ note off, which is $85,000 a year. We paid that off this past September. As I said, the high school will be paid off. So we're basically just going to be rolling the same dollars as far as debt service into this, this note payment. And I have a few more items if the board is, if it's pleasing to the board. Along with the, the debt, we are also looking at getting our ARPA allocation probably the end of this month or next, probably early next month. They opened up the portal for us to go in and apply for the second tranche. So that money will be coming in, so hopefully I'll be reporting on that this time next month. The opioid money, also the portal was open for us to apply for our first allocation. We'll get the first one probably the end of this month, early next month, and then get a second allocation in August. So that money will also be placed in restricted funds. We have also, just as a dovetail off to Manager Marino's report on the CDVG funding for housing. Last week, we uploaded our application for up to a half a million dollars in additional Dogwood trust funding, so fingers are crossed there. This will help us hopefully be able to do all of the scope of work that was put in place for the CDVG scattered site for neighborhood revitalization grant with all of the inflation and building costs. So we hope and pray that that, that will come through. We also applied for a few dollars with an Olympic health trust. That will probably be considered in the fall just to do some of these smaller repair projects. That some of our folk who may or may not qualify for CDVG will get that money as well. And then, let's see, we got the USDA. We'll need to open up a separate bank account, two separate bank accounts for these restricted monies. The first will be the opioid settlement money because that will be a special revenue fund. I'm about to run out of fund numbers on books.
What was our first draw?
Pardon?
Proximately, what was our first draw?
It'll be about $44,000.
Okay.
And then I think all total for the year, we have a little over $143,000.
$143,000?
Uh, yes. And then in conjunction with the closing on the loan, we'll need to open up a separate account with United Community Bank to hold the loan proceeds. So I would need board approval to get those two accounts in the works.
Okay, board. Do I hear a motion that Eki will be approved to open the two accounts that she needs to open and the United Community Bank? I have a motion. Is there a second, please?
Take it.
All in favor?
Thank you. And one last bit of good news is that we got word last week that the National Association of Counties is giving a national award to the 555 opioid community, which, which Grand County was sitting at the table with. So we are really excited that, that on a national level, the work that the committee in North Carolina did is being recognized for this settlement.
And I would just say that the North Carolina was, was the lead player.
It was.
In, in this whole process. So, and thank you, Eki sat on that committee and our, on the NCAACC stepped up.
Yes.
And it got that up and running and working with the attorneys and working with other states. And it turned out the other states ended up following North Carolina rather than the five states. Very proud of that committee. Thank you all for the work you did.
I was proud of being on that committee, surely. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anyone for further comments?
This is, this is Jonathan Allison.
Do you want me to sign it real quick?
No, you don't have to. I got you, Dan.
Good evening. How are y'all doing?
Good.
I just had a couple of questions about the, about the jail. How's it going? I know there's, how the world's going. It seems like it keeps getting pushed and pushed, but it's really getting pretty bad up there. We really need a new facility. And also the sheriff's office in the jail kind of be matched with what the EMS got paid. I was just trying to see where that stands. That's all I have.
Yeah, I think the, on the, of just the Justice Center, obviously the, I can't speak for the board, but I know their concern is the cost. And I think because of it's such a large cost, I think the board is deciding to talk about it during our budget workshops over the next. Sometimes we don't go all four. They're pretty efficient once they get it on. But over the next four weeks, every Friday, we'll have a budget, budget meeting starting tomorrow. So I'm hoping that we'll address that at the Justice Center and we all agree, the facility's outdated. The building, the structure is great at the jail, at the port house. The infrastructure is just so old and it's really dilapidated. And there's a lot of things that it needs, you don't want to have the spashing. So we're going to address that. Like I said, we have an RFQ ready to go. We did, we did do a program, which is what's normally involved when you first start this project. That program gets everybody that's going to be in that facility, you get their needs, what they have, what they're going to need, and then you develop a program. From that program, it tells you what size of facility you're going to need, right? And then I had added to that program the amount. And right now, we're looking at anywhere from, depending on when you get started. And this is prior to a lot of the COVID problems plus the inflation, anywhere from 15, depending million, till if, if it took four or five years from now, it'd be 22 million. So we had that included in the program. Now we'll take that and then we'll solicit once the board decides they're out there want to go for qualifications. You don't do bids, you get qualifications for a design team and they start working on. So it'll be a lengthy process, but we're almost there. We're almost there. So sack, ask the deal a little bit patient. On the money, on the, to your second question, the ARPA funds, that's what you're, I think you're referring to. They're going to start tomorrow working on that as well. And of course, it'll be up until it's a board decision on how they want to allocate those money. So we'll start discussing it again. Could get it done in a matter of an hour on one, but it could take a number of Fridays. So we're, we're getting there. We're almost, we're almost.
And you say that those meetings will start tomorrow.
That's correct.
And every Friday from that point on.
Yeah, the ARPA will start. I think we're planning on talking about it first initially because we're just. because we're just like, our CFO talked about Garland about, we're just supposed to get that new drop of that money this month. We were thinking middle of the month. We haven't seen it yet. So that's why we wanted to address it first, to kind of get an idea of what their vision is and where it needs to go. Because it's so many things. Obviously, you can use it for premium pay, but they've also considered the broadband to kind of help a lot of the folks that have up in these back collars or in these creeks that don't have internet. You can use that funds for that. And that's just a couple of things. There's several other things that they can use it for. So it'll be a decision that a Board will make, but we will start tomorrow.
Okay. Would that be to the public as well?
Yeah, I think the budget meetings are over the, that's correct. Starts at nine. The budget workshop will kick off at nine.
Nine, is it?
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, someone recommend that you name?
Really?
Yes.
Okay. Just got a couple of comments from some of the people that I meet with. The main one is the people living in Tuskegee area is complaining about motorcycles. They're not necessarily complaining about the motorcycle being there. It's just the fact that they're using it as a raceway. Some of them have contacted different organizations to find help or resolutions to try to see what they can do to calm them down. And basically, one of the citizens asked, asked if the commissioners would like to come over and sit one weekend on the front porch and just sit and listen. It's last year, the comment was made last year, one of the deputies had came over and was able to drive about six or eight citations, but then took about, but the issue starts about where the high end is. And the usual straightaway is a racetrack. And then it goes on down by Tuskegee Motor道 there through there and then up the hill by where Mr. Chris lives. So it is an issue that they have asked, and I bring it, for the Board of Commissioners to see if we can take and maybe reach out to some of these organizations or departments to see if they can get some help. Asked them if they would like to step outside for just a few minutes. We stepped out in the parking lot and I said, I want you just to listen. Because there was a group of motorcycles getting sticked on straight. And it was just the same one. And it was wide open. And so everybody concurred that, you know, everybody likes to have the visitors here, but they would like for them to be on the, the citizens actually live here. And, you know, just be cautious and try to quieten some things. And, you know, they have, they've said they reached out their body, but they run them so long. So I was contacted about that one, one concern. And I don't know very good that that will happen. The next thing that was brought up to me last night was one of the farmers asked, how much revenue has the county or the town received since the alcohol sales come in place? I told them I did not know, that that would probably be around May or June before those figures would begin. And they said they would like to know if it was a benefit or if it was a deterrent. And I said, I'll bring that up as well. And so I honored their request.
What is the procedure on the, Becky?
The town will get the bulk of the revenue and it will be a distribution from the ATC board. And I think it will be a monthly distribution. I can't, I'm trying to go back to all the old days. I'd be surprised if the county sees much of anything, which that's to be expected because it was a town referendum. But they should start seeing, and I may be able to, I'll do a little research to see if I can find where those, where I'll be able to see online what those distributions are. And I'll be glad to add that to my report on a monthly basis, once I can figure out where we're going to look for it. I think it's going to be on the Department of Revenue and Transportation.
They request that, I don't have any time here, but those, they give the distribution.
Yeah.
If those are some numbers, I'm pretty sure that you can pull up for all one that are coming.
We can.
The counties turn the NCAACC.
Yeah, and it's, because it's all public.
They can pull that up too.
It lists by county and then everything on the inside of the county that it sold in. It lists individually.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments? Okay, we'll go on to our discussion items.
All right. We're at number nine. We'll have, we'll go down the discussion items that some will need action. And one, I think, is for discussion. So releases, $618.95 in discoveries, $3,037.53.
Is there a motion to approve the releases and discoveries, please?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Next item is approval of polls. All or unanimous vote? Is it the Boards wish that I read all of them and vote on one, or would you like to vote individually?
Agree with all of them.
All of them?
Already agreed.
Already agreed. Okay.
Yeah, we already voted on it. We just want to make it a matter of record.
Yes, ma'am. All right. A is allowed request by Director Amy C. for Renee Knuckles. B is allow Cancer Society office space in the community building. C is allow agent of record letter to Gallagher Insurance. D is allow $2,200 for exceptional children in regular education in place special Olympics. And E is allow purchase of IV infusion pumps for $10,370.
Is there any question or discussion on any of these items? I would like to make one comment about the Cancer Society office space. When Neil referred this holder to me, I immediately called our county manager. And our clerk got in touch with this entire Board, and I want to thank this Board very much. There was no pause, no waiting. And it was immediately approved that the space be donated to Cancer Society. And I would also very much like to thank you, Manager Marino, as well as you, Clerk Chris, and also Hope Anderson is not here. But I would like to thank all three of you for causing, helping to cause that move to be a seamless, smooth move that could have been a little rugged and didn't. So I thank you all very much for your input and your help on that. Thank you. And now I will entertain a motion to approve all of these polls. Is there a second?
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right. Then we'll move on to opening of the bids for backhoe at sanitation.
Okay. That has to be a, only a cap. Nelson Tractor. The total from Nelson Tractor is $128,480.
So a capodan's two or?
Yeah.
And if you, Capodan.
Capodan also.
Okay, that's a way.
Hey, but the same one.
Yep.
That's a difference of $1,270 from the first bid being $129,750, the second bid from Nelson Tractor being $128,480. Do I have any discussion?
Is it around the way, I'm expecting to leave? Is it around the way, I'm expecting to leave?
It is, I'm expecting to leave. It is. And it does have the attachment that?
The graph?
Yeah, that's what he requested to be processed with. I'm hoping it's part of that. Specifically, a wonderful range bucket.
They raise a graph? Okay, we have a difference of $1,270.
How much was, how much difference was it?
$1,270. Okay. Any comments? Any questions? Do I hear a motion as to which bid the Board favors?
Send Nelson Tractor, sir?
Yes.
Make this motion to accept the bid Nelson Tractor.
We have a motion to accept the bid $128,480 from Nelson Tractor. Is there a second? We have a second. All in favor?
All right. Move on to discussion for Pink Cooper Road, Milker.
Okay, I just been up there and there are a lot of potholes up there. And I have had a lot of feedback from Yolanda Wiggins over the last few years about the condition of that road up there. I've spoken to Brian Burge with the OT. I've spoken with Dar Kody with the OT. I've spoken with our legislators, Kevin Corbin and Carl Lespey. When, when Ms. Wiggins speaks to one or the other party, and I don't know that she's spoken to all four of the people that I mentioned, but here's, here's the process. A few years ago, there was legislation in place that if a housing area was built with six houses in it, it became a state road. That law was removed from the books. It's no longer in place. And the legislature approves the budget for the Department of Transportation. They do not direct the funding of the Department of Transportation. And that is what I know about the situation. Now, that, that kind of development, best case scenario, you would have a homeowners' association that you would have a fund for the, for the road up key. And yes, there is, it's a very rough, potholey road. And when it rains, it's, it's, it's a mud hole. And I'm told, and I believe, that the people who live there would be very hard pressed if they were able at all to put together the funding even for scraping and gravel. There was, there was one time that I was told, one of, well, Mr. Burge, he felt that our local unit could scrape that road and get some gravel down on it. The big, heavy gravel, you'd probably call that something, and I don't know what you call it. But anyway, big, almost red gravel, just, anyway, not that big, but, but rough gravel. And then offices changed, directors of people, and that never came, came to be. So legislature funds the OT money in the budget. The DOT determines how that money will be spent. And that is what I know about it.
But I talked a little bit to them about it as well when Yolanda came down here. And it's extremely difficult to get DOT to take a road like that. And their first requirement is it has to be brought up to their NCAACT standard before they even consider.
We have another housing development in the county on the old Sweetwater Road up there where the Freeman gas tanks sit up there. The same scenario exactly, only there are more houses up there. And it's horrifically potholes and messy. Once again, it's a, it's a homeowners' association concern.
And I think they looked at Pink Cooper. I think they've asked about this report to the State. They were aware of it.
Many times. This probably goes back, I've probably been talking to the powers that be in Ms. Wiggins for five or six years now.
I think for a long, long time, they were hoping the river could have been there in the piece.
That might have been the case, but I would say that could be.
Now, the river's going to be directed.
Not going to have any. How many? Do you know how many houses are in the one on Sweetwater? There's more than six, I believe. And I empathize with these people a lot. It's, it's a serious problem. Any, any thoughts or comments, Neil?
No, you know, we, I knew that we'd looked into it from the beginning for, you know, that the DOT is resistant. There's not a lot we can do and we've already asked. Yeah, I just wanted to look.
And I don't mind asking again, and I don't mean against it.
And maybe we could send whoever, whoever, I don't know, Shank Orland, he's, and we could send a letter to him and get a written response back from him.
I like that idea.
Yeah, and when it comes up. And when it comes up again, we can just say, "Well, you're what they said." I suggested to write a letter asking them to take it over, or explain to us why they can't.
And I think an idea is copy Ms. Wiggins on it, because she's been very diligent in trying to get something done here, so.
Absolutely, that's good idea. Give nobody a jigs.
Any other comments? Y'all agree with that idea?
No.
Write a letter to the OT, copy Ms. Wiggins, and await the response. You take care of that.
Yep. Move on to the next item is schedule E and R appraisal discussion with tax assessor, Ms. Brandy Cook, in August.
I made, Madam Chair, she's going to need more than 30 minutes. So the regular workshop that we would have, if you want to start it earlier, or do you want to do a special workshop? This will be where she will go ahead and explain the, the book revaluation, what do you call that? Schedule. Schedule of values with you guys, and you'll choose which schedule that you want to go with. So it's a little lengthy. She did ask to go in close for it, and I said it's not a closed session, so you can't have closed, to discuss the rebound, so it's not a discussion closed. But if y'all be thinking on it, if you want it for that Tuesday, we may need to start earlier.
What day, what day is that?
Uh, I think it's on the 16th.
16th of August? All right.
Or if you want it another day, whichever way, whichever way y'all want to do it.
16th is on a.
Tuesday.
And it will take longer than 30 minutes to cover.
You want it to start at three on that day?
You're good. What, Jacob, your preference, special session, longer session? When? Oh, it's your pleasure.
A little longer, so we can do 4:30, do this to play with workshop or?
Would an hour be sufficient?
It might. I don't remember how long the last one, you remember, Aaron did the last one? I don't know if that was about an hour. Much too long, it wasn't long enough, but, yeah.
Because there's a lot of items you have to go over in each of those. And the worst thing is if you, if you don't hit your round ones, then when you do the rebound, well, this was never was discussed.
So you want to start at 3:30 or 3 o'clock?
Well, if you start toward my scheduled workshop, that'd be our time.
Okay.
Four o'clock. How do you feel about an hour and a half, from what you've seen previously, and I'm trying to think?
I think, I think an hour and a half will do it, if she'll have her presentation, you know, put on a spreadsheet where you guys are having to flip through the book back and forth. Because that book's going to be that big. Yeah, and there's a lot of detail, but there's also a lot of things that can just be consolidated into, here's option one, two, three, four.
Well, if nothing else, you could continue that workshop to the next day or Friday, and continue it even more time.
If we cut, if we were being rushed.
If we're having to make a decision, it doesn't necessarily be a workshop, it would be a special meeting.
You'll go into the regular meeting for the, to make the decisions.
Okay, so is everybody okay with beginning the workshop at 4:00 on August 6th? Anyone not okay with that? Okay, now workshop 4:00, call me 6:00.
All right, next item, County Assembly Day, which is in Tuesday, June 14th in Raleigh. Boards depression on attendees.
I would love to go, but I'm not, I'm not in a position to commit right now, honestly, because of health reasons. But I certainly do, we'll have some representatives down there. We need to be, we need to be at the table, for sure. Will you be able to attend?
I may be on my AT.
Okay.
It's the second week of my Navy Reserve drill at AT.
Any other commissioner be able to attend now? Jacob, motion we have. Okay, can we leave it open until we check schedules?
Sure.
Okay.
If the bill quality gets better, I'll go, but if it doesn't get better, I'm not going.
That'd be great, good.
Okay, we'll leave it open, we'll table it. The next one is the NC ACC Annual Conference, August 11th through 13th, in Cabarrus County, and the Diddy's for that.
And we may be in the same situation, are, will you be able to attend?
I should be able to attend that.
I made two reservations, just in case.
And what, what town is that, Charlotte?
In Charlotte, Green Berth.
Concord.
Concord, yeah, okay.
So Cabarrus County.
That's a, that's a really good place for the conference, I mean, you know, when they were forward. You'll see a lot of racing here today.
The conference itself, when the, the day it came out, I called to get the reservations, they were already sold out, so the reservations is like point one mile away from it, so you can walk to it, but I couldn't get it inside the, in the C suite for the conferences.
That conference is always very well attended. First of all, it's, it's kind of mid-state, so more, not too more able to attend.
That's not very true.
You might be able to go now?
If my mouth gets better, if not, no, I can't.
Okay, well, we'll look, bring that up to us.
People don't like to eat much, we made food, called it out one side of my mouth, and for some reason, I don't understand that. But it happens.
You're frustrated?
Yeah, yes, it is. I wouldn't wish it on anybody, but I take it back, I know a couple of people. Nobody in this group. We all were saying, but.
Gotcha. Okay, next.
Next is approve Larry Henry and Matt Smith for fire department, department directors.
This is our relief fund board trust base, and fire, they replaced a few of them, and Matt Smith, they have three plus in here at college.
Did everybody hear that?
Yeah.
Well, I certainly, I am for that, so. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Okay.
Kind of let y'all know about the relief fund that he's talking about, that's money that comes to, to the fire departments we can't use.
And how could you get money that you can't use?
We can't use it, but you can.
Like, we can take out a, well, Liam probably could be represented to use his, because ours is probably a little more niche.
Okay.
It can be used like for a supplement, the insurance company for all members. Anything spent has to go to all members.
Cover everybody.
Like, you could set up $500 for any, any fireman's family member that dies, or, as long as, or everybody can get.
Lock cash terms or anything like that, we just don't like to show. But it has to be, you, you have a threshold that you give, then I think there's a, we got you a outstanding percentage of it, but it's going to be yearly before we reach that threshold. But it's, it's something that has to be monitored and kept in especially.
Certainly. You have auditors, don't we?
To my knowledge, there's none that check for that, or.
It is, it is a nightmare.
Yeah, whenever the board makes and, and chooses to spend on it, then you have to get a statement to prove it.
You have to send off every year what you receive, what you have, interest, everything, with his documents.
In tight internal controls.
Yes, it is, it's, it's strict.
Strict, okay.
It's worse than that.
All right.
New or old business? You have Kim, will we have Brad?
Yes, I was trying to get a new picture from, I think the grand star sent me a new picture. So I'll just get the wording, and I'll try to get that done this week.
Thank you.
The clerk of many colors, I guess. I'll get that done.
Anything else?
No, I'll say one more thank you. I thank you, Jason and Kim, but I've been, thank you, she's been doing double duty for several months now, so thank you as well, thank you. All right, if there's any further here, um, I'm going to pay a motion to go over to your close session. Under GS 143-31811A1356, privilege for confidential information, attorney-client privilege, personnel in contracts.
With 10 minutes left.
With 10 minutes left.
I'll make a motion for that to be.
All in.
We must have the 10, I must adjourn.
If there's a second, all in favor. Thank you, gentlemen.